Morning Kelly.
Good morning.
Regular meeting of Athabasca County Council to order. That you would like to take off the consent agenda. Seeing none, customers.
Uh, let's look at ten point one J.
And point one three.
And. I'm thinking seven point one.
And seven point one. I I'll also add, I will add ten point one X, I just. Don't have my notes with me, so it won't be as. As elaborative as it might be, but I, that's okay, we'll go for memory. Counselor Chamsik.
Um, I'd like to add eight point one A as well, please.
Eight point one A. Any other items? So the items that I have on the list, uh, sorry, Counselor Cromwell has sent his regrets. Uh, we have item number two point one, obviously, uh, four point one, four point two, four point three, seven point one, eight point one, A, eight point two. Ten point one J. Ten point one X. And, uh, delete twelve point one. We're going to discuss twelve point two and twelve point three, which is the addition under section sixteen one, business interests of a third party. Counselor Gerlick, are you interested in making a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Counselor Gerlick has moved the council adopt the agenda as amended, is there any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed, count is eight and zero, and the motion is adopted. We, uh, delegations are scheduled for ten, so the first item, seven point one on page thirty eight of your agenda, Counselor Minz, you'd like a motive to make a motion?
I'll make the recommended motion, council approves the Friends of the Athabasca Public Library Archive Society funding request for fifteen hundred. For the Taste of the Athabasca event.
You want to, so customers made a motion to council approve the Friends of Athabasca. Public Library and Archive Society's funding requests at fifteen hundred dollars for the Taste of Athabasca event, floor is yours, do you want to have other comments you'd like to?
I was just wondering, like, I know, uh, this is a great event and everything like that, that, but on the, on the sheet there on page. Forty-five. The, uh, town of Athabasca, there's only a grant for five hundred dollars, we're being asked for fifteen hundred, is there, like? Is all, all the town's gonna give this five hundred? That's, that's their max.
That's their, uh, grant funding policies, five hundred dollars backs.
Oh, okay, so. And we don't have a max, really, we don't have a max in our, in our policy.
I think we just technically approved almost twenty thousand dollars last meeting for a different project.
Yeah, yeah, you mentioned, okay, no, I was just. Just ringing that up for. Discussion. Why the town, why the town is only maxing out at five hundred, but. We're being asked for fifteen hundreds, so, but it's a good cost.
Other comments or discussion?
Uh, hold on.
Counselor Chamsik?
Yeah, no, I think it's an excellent, uh, program, it just promotes more arts and culture within our area. And I'm really excited to attend this year, that's all I have.
It seems to be a good, a great community event that brings people together and, uh, our support. Enables groups like the Lions, uh, and the Library Society to host that gathering of the community, so I support it as well. If there are no further comments and you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion to approve. The Friends of the Athabasca Public Library and Archive Society's funding request for one thousand five hundred dollars to support the Taste of Athabasca event, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed, the count is eight and zero, the motion is adopted. Counselor Chamsik, you had put eight point one on the agenda, do you want to?
Yeah, you betcha, um, for just this Friday is our Turkey Trot, just to remind everyone for. The eight kilometer walk that our community does in support of Terry Fox, but also starting up here. Um, Grassland Egg Society has a group of volunteers, we're doing our soup for seniors. Starting October eighteenth at noon at the Grassland Hall and it's open to Grassland at Moore Amber Valley. And Prospera Seniors, it'll be running every third week for the winter months, the next one will be November fifteenth.
Is there anyone willing to make a motion to accept the community events calendars for information?
I can do that.
Counselor Chamsik has moved, we accept the community events calendars for information, is there any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed. The count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. The, uh, meeting calendars are at number eight point two. Is there any, um. Changes? Or additions, Counselor Chamsik, I'll give the floor to you first and then we'll move around here.
I actually don't have any right now, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Minz. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, it would just be to, um, request, uh, the option to change November twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth for the MPC meeting. Dependent, of course, on the workload.
EAO, does you, the administration have any advice on that, or would you rather wait till closer to the date?
On November twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
And what, again, what was, what was the proposal, Mr.?
To move it to the twenty-eighth?
I think it's a great idea, can we, can I just check and we'll report back at the next meeting?
Counselor. Wallack.
Um, on October twenty-fourth, uh, Counselor Kaptenk and I are attending the EDA Football Ministry Dinner.
EDA Ministry Dinner? Counselor Anderson?
I don't have anything to add, but I would personally be opposed to moving the MPC move, meeting so far in advance, um, just because. If we do end up needing to book one more sketch special meeting for budget, it. That would be a day that I would like to just keep on the calendar, so that we have something available and could move it closer to time if need be.
And I think the plan is to wait till closer to that date to let administration, the chair figure it in. Uh, Counselor Kapitanic?
I don't think I have anything to add.
No, next time, please use your mic, um, counselor, I see you, Counselor Chamsik, we'll go to Counselor Gerlick and then with.
I guess the only thing that I do have.
Gerlick has the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess the only thing to report is we did have blue hair in yesterday, so it's. Actually, that's it, Counselor Chamsik, the floor returns to you.
I guess the only thing that I do have is October thirtieth is, uh, ASB, uh, Chair's meeting in the city.
Counselor Polland.
Thank you, just one more thing to add, October ninth, uh, tomorrow is the, uh, Memorandum of Understanding signing for Athabasca Land Trial with all five municipalities.
Do you have a time for that?
It will be between eight, well, when you're available, eight forty-five right through until the end of the day, until we get back from the, uh. The trip, if we're doing a complete trip.
You're doing a trip to get them all done?
Yes.
Okay, so, um. Let's plan to do that. It's close to eight forty-five, nine as we can.
Eight forty-five would be great, thank you.
Tomorrow. Just making a note so that I do show up. Yeah, anything else, Counselor Minz?
I was just gonna ask through the chair to, to Counselor Chamsik if any decision was made on the ASB meeting for October.
I have, my apologies, I have not received, um, anything back that I noticed this morning and as soon as I. Check back, hopefully we will have a date soon that works for everyone.
Okay, perfect, thank you. No SB meeting scheduled yet. Uh, it would be in order to receive a motion to adopt calendars as amended, Counselor Minz has made the motion to adopt the calendars as amended, if there's any further discussion, now's the time. Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of motion to approve the meeting calendars as amended, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed, count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Moving on to ten point one J, Counselor Minz, floor is yours.
Uh, Athabasca Regional Waste Management Services, uh, Commission, we had a meeting yesterday morning. Uh, well, actually, it was an all-day event, went on a great road tour to, uh, the regional landfill. Hooked up the new, uh. New cell, I want to say hole, but a new cell that they made, which is also, and, uh. And they get a neighborhood of around one point six million dollars was spent in that, uh, in that cell and, uh. It looks, uh, it looks great, there's, uh. Of course, some discussion with the contractor and over the contract and everything like that, which is. Pretty well normal for all, any, any contracts to happen and, and, uh. So we had a great tour there and then, uh, the afternoon we. Came back here and, uh, had a meeting and, uh. I know it was on everybody's minds here regarding the one. Uh, transfers, item eight. Business arising from minutes, uh, letter A, transfer sites, cost savings plan, and, uh. And that, uh. That was more of an information item that was, that was. Sent out for discussion and, uh, we had a great discussion regarding it. That, uh, it went back to administration to come back for, with costs that is costing us through. Through the commission for, uh, transportation of these white goods and, and mattresses and, and, and different ideas, so, so. That was not, not accepted through the board, uh, the cost saving analysis there and, and it went back, so. And, and, uh. And to figure out where everybody gets treated fairly instead of one entity. Having to pay for other entities, so. So, yeah, no, it was actually a very great discussion and, uh. Athabasca County wasn't the only ones to stand up and say that. That doesn't work, so. So it was great to see our neighbors and not to have our backs also, so, uh. What else was in there, uh? There was payroll options discussed, uh, looks like we're gonna go to a private source for payroll, uh, still. Uh, the employees will be going with the Athabasca County. Um, benefits in that, so. The new. EPR is coming out, starting in, in April and there'll be, there'll be some. Cost savings to commission for that. Right now, it's just on curbside pickup, but there will be, uh, another. Oh, another, uh. I guess contract being sent out regarding transfer sites and, and depots, so, and that's, that's. Based on, hopefully by the end of, end of December, we'll have an idea on, on all three of them contracts. So, other than that, uh, financials look good. Um, just starting to discuss budgets, so, so we're. We were going that way and, and, yeah, uh, I don't know if the recall's got anything else to.
On the budget side, uh, there's some expectation that it will be a late-ish submission because. Uh, the EPR changes, the, the numbers that relate to that are coming in slowly and over time. So we're not likely to see that, I think, like, early December is kind of the hope. For some of that, and for clarity, um, the. Yeah, the, the motion around the cost saving thing was to, to direct administration to come back with a proposal on a balanced and equal approach across the region. So it was fairly specific, I think, to, to look at that and, and as, uh, Counselor Minz has said, there was. Fairly, uh. Uh, unanimous support to, um, to, to revisit that, 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 the, the proposed model wasn't something that. Worked and I think, you know, it's important to explore alternatives, but once you get into the mechanics of it, it was clear that it wasn't gonna meet the needs of the commission. Um, I'll share with council and I, you know, I. I'm finding myself. Increasingly troubled by the level of participation of CAOs from other municipalities and commission meetings as if they're members, and I don't know what and how we deal with it, but. Um, there's a level of, um. I question the appropriateness of, of that in some cases, and I want to bring it to your attention because I, I think that, um. Certainly in the past, we've seen, um, situations where people who are not members of the board have been in a closed session on a performance review or a wage discussion or even in, even. Participating from the gallery, I think is, uh. Something we need to be more aware of, I appreciate deeply the professionalism of our own CIO in either, um. Only responding when directly asked by the board or, or, um, I think recognizing that it's not his board and not attending every meeting, but I, I just. With the CIO participating, it feels to me like, uh, some of our partners have more members at the table than. Than they are allotted. Anyway.
The, the other thing is we're gonna be going through a wage review, uh. Wage review for the employees of the commission and not to, so. Oh.
Did I say a lot?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna be going through a wage review for the, uh, there was a, uh, motion made to. Employee wage and grid review, so we're gonna be doing that.
I think that's positive work of the board, there's a source, uh, for, within the garbage, the waste commission, um. Group that compiles all that data and it's, uh, important to, like, it's good work on the part of the board to keep that up to date and make sure. The overall package for employees is, is being, um, is reasonable and fair. Said all.
Yeah, that's, uh, next meeting is December ninth and. Hopefully we'll have some more information.
Thanks for that report, um, the ten point one X is the Northeast Alliance for Growth Opportunity and as it turns out. I had pre-planned this so well that I had put my notes in my binder. So I attended that meeting in the afternoon of October third in Lamont, um, the, um. There's, uh, Minister Hussein, uh, who's from the province related to immigration is, uh. Intending on hosting a workshop or the ministry would be hosting a workshop on the rural renewal stream. And, um, so one question I have for our table is, is there any interest in having, uh, county staff or counselors attend that? And so I, I guess just by. Is there, is, do we see any, we've rejected, uh, participating in that, we, we were in and then we were out. Counselor Chamsik?
Well, in my opinion, um. Pretty much recalling some of the reasons why that we in the past have not, uh, done it. Um, I would be in favor if administration feels that they have the time to be able to attend. Um, it never hurts to have that extra information.
So I'll, I'll just forward it on and if anybody is interested, then you'll have the stats and the date and time and if the CIO sees value in sending his own people and they'll know that too, that hasn't come back yet. One of the other topics of discussion was, uh, EGLC and the need to, uh. This, uh, idea of the potential to equalize casino payments to charities across the province and that's the responsibility of Mr. Minister Nally's portfolio. Um, I had forwarded out, uh, via email, the graph of kind of the, the annualized. Allotment per charity from each of the different zones and it's very clear there's a wide, uh, and deep inequity, uh, and how that impacts rural charities. And, um, I'm sure we would all agree that, uh. You know, some of the urban casinos that reap the highest rewards are also benefiting from rural, uh, players spending their money at the casino. So that was one of the things that came up was this idea that, um. That it, uh, there, it may make sense to start looking at lobbying the government to, to reconsider a more equitable distribution, um. The other piece in there that's related but separate and, uh, past the date for comments being open, but still there was an encouragement to send letters if you want. To AGLC related to the relocation of the Camrose Casino. Um, and, uh, it, it had, uh, they'd been rejected, uh, a couple times in the past. They also, uh, one of the discussion I just talked about the health initiative and, uh, so there's a, a. A health announcement on Thursday in Hinton, which I did not follow up on, so I can't tell you what that was. Uh, we talked about a, a seventy-five bed mental health recovery center, uh, slated for coming toward Mady Crossing. And, um. Tim McPhee on behalf of the, uh, the group had talked to, uh, the minister, Health Minister at, uh, AB Munis. And, uh, she invited, uh, was open to the discussion and then basically, uh, asked to coordinate the group to coordinate. The kind of key issues that are happening in the region. And, uh, so through NAGO, there will be a survey come out and it'll come to councils for us to kind of gather out of our region and in partnership, we'll coordinate it with the town and village, because it's. Because of our region, the key, uh, key issues and bumps we're seeing in the healthcare system and, you know, the shortlist that I. Kind of thought of and we were talked about where we're sitting there, there's, you know, questions around ambulances and ambulance availability, mental health supports. Um, the potential regionalization of PCN, which I don't know a lot about, but I understand is one of the discussion topics. Um, and, um, so what are our capacities, what are our capabilities and what are, what are our concerns? There's, um. The note I made, uh, from, uh, I, I believe this was one of the MLAs that said there are big decisions being made about the regionalization of PCNs by the end of October. There's still, uh, the, the, uh. Idea there is still to continue to, to seek a northeast health zone and, uh, because of the, the change right now, this is still the best opportunity to do that. Uh, we talked a little bit about, uh, alternate transportation and ambulances, so ambulances often are getting used to transport, uh, ambulatory patients and. They don't necessarily need the level of care that's available in an ambulance and so are there other ways to more economically move people? The topic of rural crime came up, um, that was kind of an off-agenda item that came on at the end. And, uh, you know, some feeling from a couple of the, uh. Leaders there that the bail reform act is not working and, um, you know, one of the best ways to prevent. Recurrence of repeat offenders is to, to keep them in custody for a little bit longer than a few minutes. Minister Greshen also attended the meeting electronically around the highway twenty-eight work and that you'll know is, uh. A lobby that's been key to that group and that we've been supportive of. And I think one of the things we should recognize about the, the NAGO group is their, their focus and coordination and, um. They're, they're not all over the place, they're trying to keep pretty steady on a few key issues, so the engineering on passing lanes are starting soon. Uh, there's a plan for, uh, utility work in the spring out in that area and, uh, so then they're gonna. Next spring is the time to start beginning to acquire land to work on a twinning. And, uh, to quote the minister, this is a priority for the province. They're gonna share, uh, a map on the passing lane locations as soon as it's available and, uh, goal within the next month. And, uh, you know, ask, they, they ask kind of, uh, from the MLAs and the, that were there. And the minister, when he spoke was to, if we see Treasury Board members, to remind them that, um, highway twenty-eight is an important regional connector. And, um. Because, uh, money all. All flows through Treasury Board. The Treasury Board process is starting in October this year, which is earlier than normal as well. And, um. And then there's, uh, the draft stage of the resource map is out, there were some requests to change that, uh, we all heard the minister speak about this at RMA in the past. Where they want to be able to kind of map the, where the resources come from with, uh. On a province-wide map, I think, um, Counselor Wallack probably saw the draft and they're, they're working on. There's some, some revisions requested on that. Um, MLA Van Dyken, uh, was clear when he spoke, uh, that any advocacy that we do related to, um. Roads and bridges, we need to make sure we have, uh, that we address the safety component. Because safety is certainly a big part of the department's mandate and so if we're speaking to the Aldeck Bridge or any of those other things, um. We know there's a safety issue in there, but we need to make sure we, we put that, that we address that as part of our, our presentation. And that's all the pages that I have on that meeting. The, the nice thing about that group is they're very solution-based, they're not running to the, to government officials with problems, they're, they're going to them with solutions to problems and, uh, I think it's a great way to do business. Uh, it's about five minutes to ten. It would be appropriate to take a motion to receive the reports for information, and then we'll take a five-minute break before the delegation. Counsel Holland has moved. We received the reports for information. Any further discussion? Saying none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all is in favor.
I.
Opposed, count is eight and zero. The motion's adopted, and we will adjourn until one minute before ten. To reconvene. The October eighth meeting of Athabasca County Council. Um, as a reminder for council, we have not ordered lunch because uh. We should be able to be out if you're at a reasonable time today. Um. We are at uh item number four point one. We have a delegation from uh Mister Ryan Park and Mister Jay Lee. Of uh grassland. Our normal practice is uh that we will hand do introductions, so welcome uh. Mister Park and Mister Lee, thank you for coming and joining us. Um, we'll do introductions around the table and then uh. Then the floor becomes yours and you you have uh the chance to talk. As a reminder about process, the delegation is a time for you to present information to us. Council then has the opportunity to ask questions around clarifying things you've said. And then later in the agenda, uh there's a potential for council to talk about it or at a subsequent meeting for council to have a more discussion, thorough discussion. So on um. On your right is our C A O, Mister Bob Beck. We have Recording Secretary Miss Blair. We have Communications Coordinator Mister Schenkelberg, and then Counsel Minz, do you wanna?
Good morning, uh. Uh, Rob Mintz, Division Eight, Baptiste Lake, Island Lake area.
Good morning and welcome. Thank you for being here. Tracy Holland, Division Five, which is east of Athabasca, Amber Valley, Paxton, Parkview and many subdivisions.
Thank you.
Good morning, Camille Wallach, Division Nine, North of the River.
Um, Brian Hall, as you know, elected in Division Four, and on the screen. Counsel, Counsel Kelly Chamsik is there, joining us remotely. Counsel Cromwell sends his regrets.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, which is the Boyle-Caslin area.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, from the Rochester Federal Area, Division One.
Again, thank you. The floor is yours.
Yeah, good morning, um. I'm Jay Lee and the gentleman is Mister Park from. We we are from Grassland. Uh, we operate the business uh. Business at the Grassland uh, Grassland La Mada, Petro-Canada and Eldorado Restaurant. So I'm here to bring up some. Some concerns about our utility bill, especially water bill at the. Grassland area. Uh. We are currently paying about. Nine dollars or cubing, cubing uh cubing meter. Uh, and. It seems like it's. It's it's like really high, like I did some research and some of some. Uh, I did research for the other Alberta municipalities and we are the. We are the most expensive, uh, we are having most expensive auto bills. And. Auto bills right now and, you know, apparently somewhere like. Even in Edmonton is paying around one dollar for cubing meter. Yeah, so I'm I I just wanna let you know, and I just wanna see if there's anything could be done to help the businesses out. And uh even the communities out. Yeah, so um. It's um, we checking out for the research for the older uh other municipal. Uh, government water bills. So our uh count is the most higher bill. Uh, than any other uh municipal governments. So um. I don't know why it's that high, maybe bad management something. Or um. So good quality orders. Or. Our government is like managing for the like mafia some things. I totally don't understand for why is it. For. Uh, increase for twenty or thirty percent. It's okay. But. Hundred percent. Who else uh agree for the hundred percent to increase? It's my bill is for. Compared to twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one. It's four hundred percent increase. So I pay for now is for thirteen thousand dollars. Someone says fourteen thousand dollars. Higher than mortgages, something. So um. Maybe. Meter is something wrong? Or. Um. Usually for daily um. Per person for the. Figure out for about three hundred. Uh, liter between four hundred liter using for days. But last month is that we our hotel is that we sold for two thousand uh rooms. But uh. So two thousand room times for four hundred, then um. It's uh um. Like. Meter is way higher than um average figure out. So. Um. Maybe meter reading system is something wrong? Or. Um. We checking out every rooms and every toilets and all the um. Water using area. Not leaking at all, but that water. Uh, that consumption is way too high. And then hotel that we pay for about thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand. Uh, months. And then uh truck stop is the same thing, it's about thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand uh months. Used to be, we pay for two thousand five hundred between three thousand five hundred. But it's. Uh. Sky high some things. So then um. Somewhere something problems. Maybe our problem or uh. Uh, water management is uh is it something wrong? We don't know. We keep checking out, but. Bill is still higher than um. Any other counties. Maybe um. Somebody explain something why the compared to any other counties. Our county water bill is a wide double than uh any other municipal governments.
So it's uh, I'm sorry, Mister Park, it's not a question and answer from council. We're just here to listen to the information and then discuss it later. So if you're if you're looking for an answer to that question, it won't be happening right now.
Yeah, when is it that you guys figured out for increasing the the uh new water bills? So then. You can using for the some kind of data for we can increase for this much because. Chemical is so expensive, labor is so expensive, power is so expensive, or. We we have to hire the high-quality technician something for the water man uh the treatment. So maybe. Something is too much expensive, that's why it's. That. For cubing meter for five dollars something. Up to eleven dollars. So. Maybe some kind of gangsters involved for the discount is, that's why it's this much that the increases. I totally don't understand for why that the power bill or gas bill is usually fifteen percent, twenty percent increase. When we buying and selling, our margin is for twenty-five percent between forty percent maximums. That maximum we can put it in the forty percent margins. This water bill is five dollar between the increase for eleven dollars. What kind of data using for? This much increases on this. Anyone explain something?
Again, Mister Park, uh the delegations are about presenting information to council. It's not a question and answer and response period. Um, so council will discuss the your concerns at the uh. At a future meeting, I believe, is the uh is the plan. Uh, once we've had the benefit of some advice from administration as well. Um. But I certainly we've heard your concern about the changes in water rates and uh. Are you uh, are you willing to share the research that you've done on uh competing municipalities with the administrative?
We have, I can print out for the. Uh, each pages uh. I can get the two of them.
One, one copy is plenty, because the administration will provide it to us at a later time. When, when, and now I I'm not sure if you have more to present, or if uh it's okay now for council to ask some questions of clarification.
It's okay.
You know. I'll uh. Just because we're talking about that data, when you compared rates, did you also compare tax rates across those municipalities as well? How the municipal tax? Non-residential rate compared?
No, that wasn't done.
Um, now we probably have some questions at the tables. I um. Counsel Holland? Floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Um, I appreciate what you're saying here today, and I I really appreciate you bringing it forward to us. Um. I, it is no secret, we we changed how we did the calculations. We went from. Um, subsidy across the county to user pay, and that really changed the rate, so that is the reason. Um, I think that you were looking for, um, and it is being discussed and um further on in the agenda, which wasn't part of our discussion today as. This has gone to administration to come back with more information, so it is being looked into, and I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. Um. It is a concern not only for yourself, but for others as well. So it's really great that you've come forward to bring that forward. Um, I guess my question um more than anything is how many municipalities that you looked at and which areas? Like how far out of the range?
We have pretty much the uh. Uh. More than central Alberta to northern Alberta, so it's a big area.
So I got the information from the University Research. So which was basically done around the. March of twenty twenty-four. And. Obviously, this one doesn't include the grassland, but it include it all includes a pound of Asavaska and ton of oil. So. And apparently we are the. Top. We are the one having the most expensive late uh across the central, across the Alberta. So I believe I it it has almost. Hundred different municipalities on the Alberta.
Okay, um, and just to follow up, thank you very much for doing that and and for bringing that forward. Um, is it possible that all council members are able to receive a copy?
Yeah, the request is to give it to administration.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your help, and thank you again for coming forward with this today.
Further questions from council of clarification? Um, so again, as uh we've mentioned, this administration will. Take the information you've provided, and council will see this again on a future agenda, and council will have a better dis, you know, a longer discussion among council. About uh about your concerns and about water rates generally. Thank you for making the trip and for taking the time to uh talk to us this morning.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And I apologize, I neglected to introduce Counsel Capitonic, because she wasn't sitting there when we went around the room, but uh Counsel Capitonic is also here. And appreciate you being here and thank you for uh your service you provide in Grassland. It uh. Looking at what's coming up. It would be in order to take a motion. To enter closed session. Counsel Ch, uh. Wallach has made a motion to enter closed session. On the. Adoption of that motion, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed, count is eight and zero, and the motion is adopted. Is. Counsel Anderson made a motion to leave closed session. We uh. The vote count was eight and zero, and the motion to leave closed was adopted. We are at um re resolutions coming out of closed session. Uh. Twelve point two, Counsel Anderson, you had them, you had one written down. Do you wanna read it?
Uh, I make motion to direct administration to provide the Aspen Regional Water Services Commission with a letter detailing. Their intended involvement in the project.
Counsel Anderson has made a motion to direct administration to send a letter to the Aspen, letter to the Aspen Regional Water Services Commission detailing their involvement. In the project? In the their intended involvement in the project? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed, count is eight and zero, and that motion is adopted. Counsel Capitonic has indicated she would like to make a motion to direct administration to. Regarding item twelve point three, to direct administration to review and provide advice on the presentation to council. On any further discussion? On the question, the adoption of that motion, all is in favor?
I.
Opposed, count is eight and zero, and the motion is adopted. There's no further business, and the meeting is adjourned.